All right. Perfect timing, Carmen. And hey, good evening, everyone. We have already come out of our executive session and we're ready to go for our May Day, May 1st, 2023, regular session of village council. So I'm going to entertain a motion to move back into our regular session.
Oh, second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. So I think first on the agenda is to talk about some announcements. And I think, Hostway, you had a few, right?
I do, I have a few. I'll start off with a plaque. This is the National Certification of Reliable Public Power. So we were awarded reliability for our work on keeping the lights on. So again, this year, this is the fifth year in a row that we've done it. So something that we're really proud of. So I brought three other plaques. I couldn't bring all the plaques, but I think this speaks volumes to the work of our public works team, also of us up here, because we helped ensure that that also happens, that they have the resources to be able to do the work that they need. Thank you for your support. And there's Johnny.
All right, look at that, all right. Reliable, see?
All right, that's the, that's the first announcement. The second announcement is that, do you know what today is? Today, in addition to May Day, is the first day of spring cleanup. So that means you can put out all your treasures for other people to find. And if they don't take it, then Rumpkey will. So we have instructions on our website, on social media, on the rules to follow for spring cleanup. So check them out.
Okay, great. Any other announcements from council members?
Well, I'd like to thank our village staff for the help with our really great Earth Day event last Sunday, for Johnny's crew for putting up that banner that one of the environmental commission, Riley Dixon, designed, and Samantha Stewart for helping us go through all the hoops we had to go through and get the trash cans and everything. And also Catherine Zimmerman, who's on Environmental Commission, and Bethany Gray, who's with the Habitat team. The two of them really put the thing together. I hope I didn't miss anyone, but it was a great event, so I want to thank everyone.
All right. Yeah, thanks, Mary Ann. I thought Earth Day was amazing. I appreciate all the support for Celebrate Trails Day as well. Sorry that it was not as temperate as we would have liked. So I know normally we get a lot more folks, but it looked like you guys had a lot of fun. I actually forgot to bring long pants, so I was in northern Indiana doing my event and freezing my butt off, but it was also fun. So I did want to mention a few things. I guess first of all, yeah, I also, I know Riley probably doesn't mind hearing again. I like his banner. He did a great job, and Earth Day every day is really nice. I also, you know, we talked about, yeah, May's got a lot of things going on, but May is Bike Month. And I know one thing that's on the calendar is on May 17th is Bike Walk the School Day in Yellow Springs. So everybody, you know, make sure to be extra careful if you're out and about in a vehicle on May 17th. And I'm sure we're going to have like our team there, and we've got a lot of other folks that support that event. We also, yeah, kind of a really cool thing that maybe some of you guys know about if you are on the Yellow Springs Community Foundation emails is there's a film festival that sounds like coming to town. And I'm really excited about the opportunities, you know, and this is not just the little art, but there's talk about having some outdoor venues and some smaller venues. I'm going to be curious when we get to the manager's report, what we're thinking about with Short Street, because I think there's some other like opportunities there, but that was one thing that was mentioned. Also, May, this is the first day of Asian Pacific American Heritage Month. And this is something that's really important and significant to our village, highlighting our goals around diversity. I wanted to, maybe I'll come back to this. Oh, Jalen Rowe's birthday is today. And so, you know, I want to give a shout out to Jalen Rowe. She's been really great in supporting a lot of our activities around village mediation and some of our more difficult meetings. And, yeah, I guess also, if folks aren't aware of a world affair, a law, ongoing Dayton International Festival, it's in Green County now, and it's happening this weekend. A really great opportunity to enjoy ethnic culture, food, entertainment, whatnot. But I guess I wanted to talk about like two more specific things. So one was the article week before last about event fees, because I think there was a lot of confusion around that discussion, and we'll be talking about it again. Mary Ann, I really appreciated what you put in the packet. But I, I really want to like emphasize, and I said it several times at the meeting, but it still showed up in the Y S News. We did not tell any organization that they had to pay these fees. We are talking about how to assess the costs for the village. And, yeah, I thought it was unfortunate that that is the way like it came out, because really, we are trying to, you know, be physically responsible, trying to figure out what the costs are, trying to figure out how we all work together to continue to have a healthy, thriving community. But, I mean, specifically, and I brought the paper with me, the comments about the village saying you had to pay X, Y, and Z, that never happened, that never will happen unless it's at council table. I mean, that's, we make those decisions. And ultimately, what we're trying to figure out is how we continue to maintain the same things, understand what the costs are, and continue to have a balanced budget. But, but anyway, I do want to correct. Nobody has ever said, you know, these are fees you have to pay, but we are trying to figure out how we balance that, you know, in the interests of the village overall. The other thing I wanted to speak to is why we had a four-hour meeting, last meeting. And, and maybe we can reflect on this, because I think we constantly, I know everyone at council table is thinking about like, where do we kind of get off the rails or whatever? But we had four topics last meeting that I guess I'd like to emphasize, that I'd really like us to figure out a way to vet these beforehand. So we had the Y S Pride Event, which we talked about a lot. We had tried to talk about that offline. I'd still like to figure out how we work on events that way. We had the Home Inc. request, which we'll be talking a little bit more about. I had hoped that the Housing Committee like would be able to like figure that out beforehand, but I also understand, especially after talking to Gavin, that it's not always easy for a committee to, you know, make those recommendations. But, you know, it ended up like creating a lot of like time. We also had the issue around the vendor fees, which we had tried to talk about in Finance Committee. We had tried to work on. It's a challenging topic. Clearly, there's some misinformation about like what's going on. But ultimately, that, the goal there is to understand what the costs are and understand, you know, then how we make decisions about supporting those events, given that we're responsible for taxpayer dollars. And then we had the zoning issue, which, you know, we're also going to be continuing to talk about. But I think in all those cases, one of the things that I think we committed to do, and this is where, you know, I'm talking to council primarily, is having these council committees or other ways to kind of vet these issues before we bring them to the public meetings. But I think we've got some other options as well. You know, we've talked about work sessions. I know Hostway has made a recommendation that maybe we have a standard like 30-minute work session before every council meeting, where we dig into an issue. But I don't want to have another four-hour council meeting. And plus, we also had an hour executive session. I don't think it's productive. We've been pretty good at like, you know, keeping our meetings to two and a half hours. But, you know, since I know we're always thinking about this, I just wanted to kind of highlight the things that I had seen from the last meeting and hoping that maybe that informs how we do those council committees and some of those other things. Okay, so that's a lot of announcements. Anything else before we move into the consent agenda? Yeah.
Announcement from on the floor. I had suggested maybe they've got a quick one, and they might not want to wait all the way to Citizens Concerns.
Okay.
I mean, if you're quick, it's better to do it now.
Come on up, yeah. If Judy may lay that out, go for it, yeah.
Hi, my name is Izzy. And we're starting our news letters tomorrow. I am a student from Antioch, just down the street. And as well known, we often can be pretty surprising. But I promise I bring good news. So a while ago, us students were sitting and talking and were of the opinion that for everyone in the world, honestly, these last few years have been pretty rough, to say the least, since the pandemic and everything. And we've really wanted to find a way to help everyone as a community, not just on our campus, but everyone, sorry, come back together, just to do our part. So we had the idea of running a community festival to invite everyone who wants to come to just honestly come and have a good day. So it came to be the Antioch Victory Festival, which name derives from our motto, which is to win one for humanity. And so I'm here to announce that we have been working very hard and will be hosting our festival, which is totally free to attend, on Saturday, May 20th, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. We have a lot of really cool activities lined up, from a raptor show to visiting our farm. And it will be inside the Wellness Center. We have booths available and activity space available as well for community members who are interested. We're going to have food trucks, and we're working on having a restauranteau, where the idea is the restaurateurs are bringing samples of their food for the community to try at no cost as donation. And you know, what works for them works for us. Everyone loves to eat. But if you're interested in coming, please do. If you want a table or to run an activity, we'd love to have you. We're trying to reach out as much as we can. We're going to have a website that will go fully live by midnight tonight, which will have signup sheets, and that's VictoryFest.net. But yeah, we just want to invite everyone. If you'd love to, if you'd like to do anything at the festival, just reach out and we'll get you set up.
Thank you, Izzy.
Yeah, thank you so much. And we can also help promote that on our village Facebook page. So are you connected? Thank you, that's cool. Are you connected with Philip O'Rourke? Okay.
If you could send me that as PDF.
You can email me as well. But yeah, we'll get that on our Facebook page, and exciting. Yeah. Okay. Any other announcements? Okay, so we're going to move into the consent agenda, which are our minutes from the last meeting. So I'll put that on, and can I get a motion to approve?
Again.
Okay, so I think, Judy, we decided there was one change, which is when we talked about the Y S D C piece, it had said the RAISE grant, which is one of the grants we're after, but there's also the RISE grant without the A. So we are, I'm making a motion to update that. And also, I think we, we have Lisa Abel's name spelled correctly. So I guess, I guess, I guess I need to, first of all, ask for...
You actually gave me the corrections ahead.
Okay, so we're good? So we can just vote?
Yeah.
Okay. So all those in favor, yes. Mary Ann, something else? Okay, signify by saying aye. Aye, all right. Any opposed? Okay, review of the agenda. Anything we need to add, remove, or modify?
Yes, I have two things. I would like to have some time under, I guess, new business, five or 10 minutes for us to discuss work sessions and start, well, one to ascertain whether council agrees to do that, and then start planning for that. And in the manager's report, and I've spoken, or I've emailed Hostway, I'd like for there to be a discussion about the Fairfield. Amen. How we might proceed about that.
That sounds good. And I may add to your work sessions thing. I kind of had a note about council committees, based on what I was saying earlier, so those might kind of come together. Okay, anything else on the agenda? Okay, all right. So Judy, I guess we're going to have you do petitions and communications?
I'm set.
All right.
So there's a letter from Elaine and Keith Kreske opposing the zoning code change, but actually sort of agreeing with it at the same time. They were hoping that one could simply create a duplex out of a single house, and that is in fact something that you would then be able to do. So, so I think there's more openness to the idea there than they might have thought that there would be. There was a card sent from Leslie Schaefer, which was extremely sweet. You should read it if you read the packet, because she could not say enough good things about Denise Swinger and Johnny Burns saving her yard from becoming a lake instead of the pond that it normally is. John Hembling sent an extensive letter detailing opinions on conditional uses, some which he was more in agreement with, some that he thought were more helpful, some that he thought were less helpful. That's fairly detailed. Mary Ann McQueen sent in a memo addressing multiple subjects. So she addressed several things that went on in the last meeting, and that is also a pretty useful memo, and it may get referenced under different topics this evening. And then Matt Raskis sent a very kind note appreciating staff's work with the Neighbors for More Neighbors group in making zoning amendments.
All right, thanks, Judy. So this actually reminded me of what we got from Chief Burge, which is on the table. Is this something we need to add to the agenda, because it's urgent?
It is a resolution. She just had not had time to correct the memo.
Okay, so this, okay, so we've got this memo now. Gotcha, okay. Cool, all right. So then let's go ahead and move into our very extensive legislative agenda. All right. And we're going to begin with, okay, so actually, let me think about this. We have one second reading. Okay, so I'm not sure this is going to matter, but let me go ahead and do my usual. I like to get a motion to read our one ordinance for a second reading by title only.
So which, where are you?
That is 2023-18.
You're not starting with the first?
Well, we normally just, I normally just do it at the beginning of it all, so.
Second read hints the motion on the second read.
So we're not even going to talk about the first one?
So this is what we've done for three months now. Like at the top, whenever we have a second read, I just ask that we can do it by title only. So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, okay. But we are going to talk about 2023-17, first of all, and we can do that by title only.
Right, this is repealing or replacing Chapter 1242.04 Annexed Land of the Yellow Springs zoning code.
Can I get a motion?
No.
Second.
All right, okay. So you may remember at our last meeting that we modified this to enter annexed land automatically as RC instead of RA. We seem to get support from that, but because it was a substantial change, we started back on the first read. So Denise?
Yeah, I don't have anything to add to that. Staff is fine with that.
Okay, cool, all right. And we appreciate that. Yeah, I think as Denise said last time, it fits with our goals around density. So, questions or comments? Okay, all right, let's go ahead and do a vote.
All right, McQueen?
Yes.
Devor Leonard?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Housh?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. And next of all, we'll do 2023-18 by title only.
This is repealing and replacing Chapter 1248 Residential Districts of the Yellow Springs zoning code.
All right, can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay. And this is part of why I paused, because, you know, there, there are some thoughts on the table about whether we table this. But Denise, do you want to?
Yeah, I don't know about that. So if you are planning on tabling that, I mean, from staff's perspective, our position has not changed. We still want to have it be conditional.
And do you want to talk a little bit about that again?
I would rather have Amy talk about that, because I feel like I talked about it too much last time.
All right.
So Amy can kind of give you an understanding of conditional.
Okay, great. And as Amy's coming up, I'll go ahead and just open the public hearing to make sure I cover that base.
I apologize, I just put a piece of candy in my mouth from my, from my May basket. Yes, so we had a chance to discuss this at last meeting after the recommendation from the organization that raised all of these zoning text amendments. Planning Commission weighed the pros and cons of how to make that work, and in the end, settled upon multifamily being a conditional use in a single-family district. And that was the recommendation that's come upon you, come up to you from Planning Commission. Staff, of course, supports that. There's been a lot of discussion from Johnny about infrastructure and the conditional use process, how that plays into that. And then also, of course, the discussion about how Planning Commission felt like it was a way to, you know, get the full review of every project through the conditional use process without it being simply permitted and then on staff's desk. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have or help you as you work through it.
Well, I guess since you're up here. So I guess the two things on my mind are, you know, number one, whether the, you know, kind of institutionalizing the utility review covers the concerns. And so again, like, I don't know, that might be where Denise or Johnny might want to come back. So that's question number one. Question number two is, and this probably is more for you, Amy, is can we put some of these things in our zoning code so that we don't need a conditional hearing?
So playing through the hypothetical of this happening from beginning to end is, you know, a property owner owns a single-family lot, they decide, or owns a lot in a single-family zoning district, decides they want to put a two-family, three, multifamily on it. Then where do they go from there? We know council has a utility review coming in front of you. Actually, we're going to talk about it yet tonight. So there is a utility, mandatory utility review that's going to be added to the code. So yes, those utilities will have an opportunity to be discussed at that point. Should you make it a permitted use, it could go right to that utilities review. My concern there is then what? Because there is going to be a conversation between staff and this property owner who wants to make the change. And if staff says, okay, this is, you know, permitted use, you're free to do this. However, it's going to cost whatever, $50,000, $100,000 worth of infrastructure improvements to get from point A to B. And the property owner says, well, I have a, you know, I don't know that that's to be true, or I don't, or there's some kind of standstill at that point, right? Where then we have no resolution for that property owner. There's no meaningful way within the village for them to pursue, you know, the next step of that. If we have a conditional use process, it happens from a planning commission, and then it becomes in front of council. And then, of course, there's an immediate appeal to common pleas court, which is, conditional uses are very unique in that regard. Conditional uses and variances, in that they can be appealed in that way, which is a pretty quick streamlined approach for a property owner to resolve something with their community. So I see value in a utility review. That should be passed, I think that should be enacted into the code regardless. But the conditional use for this process is helpful, because it allows for that, for the whole picture to take shape before any project moves forward, to know exactly how it's going to work on a particular lot, what it's going to mean for infrastructure, you know, and what it would mean for wastewater. And, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about stormwater lately. So what stormwater concerns there could be, there'd be a way to mitigate and address those upfront. Conditional use processes, when done properly, can operate as a mediation, happens in front of Planning Commission, right? And there's, the whole project can be viewed, and all of the details can be worked out in a measurable, meaningful way. If there's a plat, a single-family plat over the property that we're talking about, then there's a condition that the property owner, it's incumbent on them to deal with their HOA or Neighborhood Association, or whatever the entity may look like. It might just be their neighbors, that holds that legal right to say yes or no on that. So there's just a myriad of issues to be considered, could be, in these hypothetical circumstances, and the conditional use lets that, lets that process play out. And, you know, something, nothing is set in stone here. The text amendments can be made at any time. If this is, council moves forward in this way, and it's made as a conditional use, and in three years or five years' time, well, you know, we think now it's, we're ready. Let's move it to permitted. Council could have that conversation at that time. There's nothing to stop you from initiating another text amendment in the future. Once we can see what the utilities review looks like, what multifamily or two-family, whatever it may be, and single-family residential looks like, you know, the conversation doesn't have to stop there. It could happen again in the future.
Wouldn't any of the other communities you work with have permitted uses for?
No.
Okay.
No, as a matter of fact, the people who brought this to you showed me the first community I'd ever seen that had this. I think it was Fairborn, correct? Has duplexes as a permitted use in their single-family district. That's the first, the first time I've ever seen them.
Other questions for Amy? Okay, thank you. All right, so other questions or comments from council at this point? Mary Ann?
Yeah, well, I had a pretty extensive conversation with Denise and Johnny and Amy. And philosophically, I, I would like to see the time when these are permitted. I don't, practically, I don't think we're there. I think it would cause too many problems at this point. So I support ordinance as written.
Johnny?
All right, piggyback on Amy for a minute, and then I just asked Denise a question, which actually just floored me. So permitted, when you're talking about permitted, as I explained to Mary Ann, permitted means it's ready to go. And we're not ready to go anywhere except for one area, and it's one lot in Burge 3 that they could do whatever they wanted to. But we were talking about the utility review. I don't know where I'm going to find the time, but I'm going to find the time. But I can't have 50, 60, 70 people just come in and ask me to review things with no associated cost. This is, the majority of the work was done by Denise, getting all this stuff ready, and then she would come over and we'd talk, and we, I'd drive her out. But if there's no fee associated with these utility reviews, I'm not going to have time to do them in a timely manner. I was shocked. I just got shocked that there was no fee for me to have dedicated time to be able to put the effort in, to look at the storm, the sewer, the sanitary, and the water. That this is just...
Yep, add that to our agenda. Yeah, I mean, we totally need to have that.
Could I say one thing, because it involves a conversation we also had? Because I was, I asked Johnny about the, there are three Residence Aid districts, and I was asking him about the utilities in those districts. And I came away from that conversation feeling that we have utility issues, whether it's sewage, water, stormwater, electric, that's it, I guess, isn't it? In all of our districts, in, in all of Residence Aid. Not, not in every single lot or every single block, but every single district in the village. And so while if we might want, well, I might want to have these all permitted, we have a lot of work to do to get our utilities so that they're going to be...
Right, which we heard during our goals planning, so, yep. Okay, all right, thanks Johnny. Any other council stuff before we, okay, citizen comments. Mitzi?
Well, I just want to change pace here a little bit.
Okay.
Number one, I want to thank council members for relooking at this. And I'm going to read a statement and then change it up a little bit. Local zoning regulations allow communities to plan for the use of land transparently. Addresses infrastructure plans and needs and involves residents and, through public meetings. It's an important planning tool that benefits communities economically, socially, and improves health, welfare, and also helps conserve, helps with conserving our environment. While I personally appreciate the opportunity it's provided me as a property owner to address, to address my concerns, questions, suggestions, and working together to find acceptable solutions with other parties. This has been demonstrated in many ways. I can remember a planning commission meeting where Home Inc. and residents on Xenia Avenue met together and brought up their concerns about water retention, drainage, fire and safety, and parking issues. And through that meeting, there were resolutions made. I hope council will think long and hard about the input and recognition, recommendations from their planning commission members, the zoning director Denise Swinger, Johnny Burns's insight regarding infrastructure, impact and needs, and, and of course, the citizens of Yellow Springs, history of being active participants in these processes. I suggest a town meeting be held, but it doesn't seem like that's going to need to happen. And possibly even more surveys to get, truly get input from residents. While I realize some council members have made it clear and advocate for alternative ordinance to make our allowance for more liberal development in RA areas, I really appreciate this being tabled at this time. You know, we're, we're a community of individuals and, and members that like to be involved. And I appreciate that. And I thought, and I feel, that this would be silencing our community members when it comes to zoning and zoning reform. Thank you.
John?
Hi, I'm John Hemfling, Yellow Springs resident. So we're very, speaking for me and Matt and Alex, we're, we're very happy with this improvement on the village's existing zoning code. Spent some time looking over the planning commission minutes, sort of reviewing conditional uses of residential uses in residential districts since 2000, which were just all ADUs basically, since there weren't any multifamily applications in the medium-density residential district during that period. But, you know, they, they went through pretty, pretty smoothly. Generally, the only condition that was, the only additional condition the planning commission would impose is privacy screening. And, you know, that's not going to kill any, any project. And I imagine there would be pretty similar, I think, for duplexes and probably townhouses in, in the low-density district after this is adopted. And I, I guess I wouldn't even necessarily expect that planning commission would necessarily reject multifamily applications either. As I sort of said in, in what I wrote, my main concern would be that planning commission might sort of push the developer to build fewer units, but that's still certainly an improvement over, over where the code currently is. And I was sort of beating myself up that, you know, it hadn't occurred to me that rather than looking to sort of like buff up, you know, the permitted use process, the, you know, site plan level B process to be where staff would feel comfortable with it, we could have gone at this, and now it's too late. But, you know, if we were coming at this again in the future, we could have come at this in terms of maybe trying to loosen up some of the standards involved with conditional use reviews specifically of residential uses in residential districts. Specifically, like that, you know, concerns about, you know, traffic and noise, you know, that's just naturally going to happen with any residential use. And that we, it would be, I would, I would hope that, you know, ideally, that planning commission wouldn't use concerns of traffic and noise to sort of push a developer to build fewer units. But in any case, I'm, I'm very happy, and I hope that all of you feel good about this, and I hope that it passes tonight. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, John. Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, so I'll just say a few things, but I think it's pretty clear where we're going. Utility review, critical, and we've heard about this forever, and yeah, we, I mean, I want something on the agenda to, to fund, you know, to attach a fee to that. I mean, yeah, we definitely, assuming Amy that we can do that, I would think we can. Second thing that this discussion reminds me of is that I feel like we need to lock down our zoning code. And so I'm compelled by a lot of the things that the Neighbors for More Neighbors and other folks have brought up around, that we should be able to spell out a lot of these things in our code. I also think I don't want another Ober or any other situations. The more that we can, like, indicate in our code what we want in terms of affordable housing and other kinds of things, I'd love to see that happen. And so I guess that's a shout out to our planning commission. But I, I think, I think we, you know, I definitely think there are things that we can do that would help to make conditional feel like less of an obstacle if it was spelled out. And so that was one of the things I took away. And the last thing is, I guess I do believe, because, you know, the American Planning Association and like everybody else that's an expert in this area, like, has highlighted that anything in the process is an obstacle. And I understand that, you know, Yellow Springs approaches it in a great way. But at the same time, like, I was at that meeting with John where St. Mary's was talking about Yellow Springs NIMBYism and, and the fact that, you know, basically developments come to Yellow Springs to die. You know, that's, that's upsetting to me. On a lower level, it reminds me of when I found out that we were a dog unfriendly community. And we, you know, we created a dog park. And so totally different things, but, you know, it shocks me to be in a meeting and hear that Yellow Springs is considered to be NIMBY. I mean, that just doesn't make sense. So I believe that these are obstacles. Again, I think we do a great job. I think more clarity in our code makes sense. And I had some other notes here. Yeah, I mean, I, I think in general, we need to continue this conversation. But, but I'm encouraged to hear John say that, you know, we're on the right track. And I do agree for now with this resolution or with this ordinance, I don't have a reason to not keep it conditional. So, I mean, that's where I'm at, you know, and I kind of put the task out there. I think Matt Raska wrote a great letter to the editor around, you know, conditional versus permitted. But I'll just say I'm open, and I think, you know, the single-family housing thing is hugely problematic. And I'd obviously, I honestly agree, everybody should have to come conditional. I mean, you know, based on even Mitzi, what you said, like, I'd love for every, like, project to have a discussion so that we can all, like, work on these things. But I think we'll work on that, and I appreciate the conversation, and I think I've said enough. Anything else? Okay, so then I think we're ready to close the public hearing and take a vote. Judy?
All right, Brown?
Yes.
Devor Leonard?
Yes.
McQueen?
Yes.
House?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, next up we have ordinance 2023-29. We can do that by title only.
2023-20.
Oh, 20, sorry.
This is repealing and replacing Chapter 1250 Business Districts of the Village of Yellow Springs zoning code.
Can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
Okay. And I think Denise, are you kind of talking about, like, there's several amendments that we're making here, right?
Yes, this, this one in the business district is simply to make the dwelling units on the upper floors where you have non-residential below to be permitted rather than conditional. That's it.
Cool. All right, any questions or comments? Okay, um, yeah, I don't think we need to take a vote at this point, so I think that one looks good. All right, so let's do ordinance 2023-21 by title only.
This is repealing and replacing Chapter 1252 Industrial Districts of the Village of Yellow Springs zoning code.
Can I get a motion?
I move. Second.
Okay. Denise?
Okay, so in, in the industrial district, we did not have a residential section. So we added a residential section, allowing dwelling units in buildings with non-residential uses. We're not saying whether it's upstairs or downstairs. It will just be, because it's a conditional use, we can really look at if it's safe where it's going to be. You know, you don't want an apartment and then have a toxic waste something below, you know? So we just want to keep that conditional, and zoning group also agreed with that.
Questions or comments? Okay, looks good. All right, so then let's go ahead and do ordinance 2023-22.
This is repealing and replacing Chapter 1258 Schedule of District Uses of the Yellow Springs zoning code.
Can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
All right.
And this really is just taking all of these and combining them together, all the changes which are all in the residential section. And it just is adding conditional, adding dwelling units in buildings with non-residential uses. In industrial, it's changing from commit, from conditional to permitted dwelling units on the upper floors. And then it's adding in RA the conditionally permitted dual, multifamily, single-family detached, single, attached single-family.
And as a side note, just for folks still hanging in there, you know, typically when we make any changes, we have to, you know, modify several ordinances to reflect that. So, so they're all kind of in the same vein. All right, questions or comments? Okay, then let's go ahead and do 2023-23. Judy?
This is repealing and replacing Section 1262.08E4 Specific Requirements of Chapter 1262 Conditional Use Requirements of the Yellow Springs zoning code.
Can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
All right.
And this is just housekeeping, too. This is just adding the dwelling units in buildings with non-residential uses.
Okay, 2023-24, we can do my title only.
This is repealing and replacing Chapter 1284.02 Definitions A through B of the Yellow Springs zoning code.
Can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
All right.
So although we have a lot of details, we try to have some detail in our code. Sometimes it still can be subjective, so that that's where the definitions play an important role. Because you can clearly explain what it is, what, try to get your message across through that definition. And one of those that we wanted to add was aid to construction, because we say it in lots of different places, but we don't really have a definition of it. So that is what we included in here, that it's an amount of money that's paid to the municipality by the developer or property owner for required infrastructure improvements.
Great, okay. Mary Ann?
Yeah, I have a question. If an infrastructure improvement is going to have a positive impact on more than one lot or development, whatever, how is that accounted for in the aid construction or? In other words, you know, does, if, if someone builds a lot, let's say there's some empty lots, someone builds on a lot, they need to have a bigger water pipe or something. They pay for that, and then that's going to benefit all of the other lots. Do they still have to pay for all of it, or how does that work?
You're doing such a good job, Les.
If it has to be increased due to the size of the development or the extra lot, the other people don't benefit from it, because they're already receiving that. So the reason why it would have to be paid by aid to construction is, is the lot is needing more water, more sewer, or more electric.
So it's only, the only benefit will go to whomever is being charged state to construction. No other lots or residences.
The neighbors would get better water lines, or they would get newer water lines or larger. They could do things later down the road, but that's later down the road, not right now.
Can I say, is this common, this aid to construction? And what, what about an instance, like, what's the, one of the seven colleges that we have that has the lots that got split up? You know, like, there's multiple vacant lots that are...
East Center College?
East Center College. So like on that one, if there's several, I don't know, like, we're talking about the Home Inc. deal where there were, you know, where multiples of units are going to get built, but you don't, you're only doing one thing at a time. If somebody comes in there, I don't know what the infrastructure is there.
We're getting ready to, I'll give you a prim... We're, we're getting ready to, I'll give you a prime example. We're getting ready to put in electric and we know that three houses are being built there. So we're going to trench in the electric and the three houses, we'll split that cost.
But aren't there more than three lots?
One lot doubled. So one person bought double lot that I'm building the whole lot.
Okay, thank you.
Hey Johnny? Any other questions? Okay. Um, and so then I think we lastly have, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three twenty-five, which we can do by title only.
All right, this is repealing and replacing chapter twelve eighty-four point zero nine definitions T through U of the Yellow Springs zoning code.
Can I get a motion?
Move. Second.
Okay. And I know that this is putting in the utilities review.
Yes, and, um, because it's a conditional use, I assume that the fee with the increase in our conditional use fee, that that might help cover the utility review, but, um, you still feel that way? Is it, is it a conditional use? If it had been permitted, it'd be more worrisome.
As long as it's conditional and you're covering the fees, I, I don't have, I understand the same way with all of that.
Yeah.
If I take it over to where I have to do a lineary for the cost.
Right, well, see, and that was another worry with permitted, that people would come and want all utilities review for something they may or may not ever do.
So what's the fee range now? I can't remember.
It's now two hundred.
Okay, so two hundred in general?
For a conditional use hearing.
Okay. Well, we, you know, we don't have to decide tonight, but you guys think about that and decide if we need to.
Yeah.
Cause it would be, it would be hard to make an adjustment.
It would end up being on another, it would be on the zoning fee schedule. We'd have to add it there. So wouldn't, it would, we wouldn't want to put it into the definitions anyway. So I think the definition is good and solid. It's just if you want to do a fee, then we would put it under the zoning fee schedule.
There'll be new service. There'll be new service under the zoning.
Yeah. Well, I mean, um, my guess is that you would get support to, uh, make sure we're covering that. Um, okay, questions or comments? Okay, thanks Denise. Um, so I know we ran through like several pieces of legislation, you know, again, like these are about trying to expand, um, the abilities for, uh, folks to, uh, get their projects done. So I don't know if there are any citizen comments at this point, um, but remember these will all have second readings with public hearings at our next meeting and, uh, and it'll be an opportunity to speak then. Yeah, Denise?
Hostway will cover that next week. I will, I will be here. I mean, I'll be on the log, but this is planned for a while, so I'm not going to be here on that.
Okay. But that's not, that doesn't mean this is your last meeting, right?
No, 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 no.
All right. That's why I was like-
It means you get me next.
Okay, all right. Yeah, that's it. Um, okay. So any other comments at this point? Um, yeah, I think these are all good things, but there will be plenty of time to comment. You know, I just want to say some last, uh, thing, I guess, to you guys. Um, you know, I heard that maybe there was a feeling that staff was being disrespected around the zoning issues. I mean, I, I just have to say, um, you know, probably that comes back to me. I am, you know, always open to hearing all the comments. Um, I hope you guys feel like, uh, all of council listens to staff. I really think we do. And, um, and then I also want to listen to new ideas and whatever. So I just want to make sure that, um, you know, we can think about it more as like having discussions that, you know, make things better for everybody. So, sorry if you, uh, if I created that, but, uh, but again, well, you know, my perspective is I want to absorb everything and then make the best decisions. So thank you guys. Okay. Um, so I think then we're going to move into, uh, our resolutions. And first of all, we've got, uh, twenty twenty-three thirty-two, which we can do by title only.
This was amended slightly, that amended version was put on the table. There was a slight change made to the title and I in fact had the sewer relining date incorrectly, uh, stated there, so that's been corrected. So the corrected title is approving a grant to Yellow Springs Home Inc. for funding for phase one, eight rental units of the Cascades Affordable Housing Project.
Can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
Okay. Um, so I think this was laid out pretty well at the last meeting. I don't know, Hostway, do you want to outline what the-
Uh, sure, sure. I, in, uh, in alignment with the conversation that we had last council meeting and the memo that I submitted, that this, uh, this resolution is before you, it honors that initial request of committing forty thousand dollars from the Affordable Housing Fund for Home Inc. Uh, it comes in two form and two payments. One is, uh, a, a check payment right away of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars for that, uh, sewer relining work that was done by the village. And then the second payment would be eighteen thousand forty-one dollars that would be dispersed upon, upon successful award from the Ohio Finance Agency, uh, for the project. The doing of this process, and as you, you may recall from the last council meeting, doing it in this pro, in this method allows for Home Inc. to book the revenue on their end and also book the expense for the project. So they'll be able to do that, uh, immediately upon our issuance of the twenty-one thousand nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars. And when we do that second payment, uh, when the grant's awarded.
Okay. All right. And of course that's, uh, coming from our, uh, designated Affordable Housing Fund, which I'm happy to see us using. So, uh, questions or comments? Okay. Uh, any questions or comments from citizens? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So then we'll move into, uh, twenty twenty-three twenty-four?
Thirty-three.
Oh yeah, you're right. Okay, thirty-three. We can do that by title only as well.
This is approving a tap fee waiver to Yellow Springs Home Inc. for the Cascades Affordable Housing Project.
Can I get a motion?
I moved.
Second.
Okay. Um, you want to talk about this one as well?
Sure, sure. Uh, this is, uh, providing, uh, up to fifty thousand dollars of tap fee waivers for the first phase of the project. Um, the only, uh, item here to, to leap open is, is that we're not sure what the final tap fees are going to be because there's engineering works that needs to be done. Johnny had connected with, uh, our engineer and our, one of our contract on that. But we're hesitant to, discussing those details because we need a wait from Home Inc. to, uh, share engineering with us. So Johnny, I don't know if I missed anything from that. Uh, so that's what this covers, up to fifty thousand dollars of tap fees for the first phase, which is eight rental units.
Okay. Johnny, anything to add? Okay. Uh, questions or comments? So that was one of the things, uh, the last thing the Hostway just said that, that I was thinking about with this resolution is that, um, it probably makes sense to, um, to amend it, to highlight that it is for those first eight units. And, um, actually I talked to Emily, she gave us some language. Judy, do you have that handy or?
Um, well, in the, you did not amend the title. You suggested amending it and that does change the resolution, modify it to approve a tap zoning and permit fee waivers for phase one, eight rental units of the Cascades Affordable Housing Project.
Mm-hmm. So if we, you feel like if we adjust this to highlight the, the eight units, that that's a substantial change?
Um, I think if you add zoning and permit fees, that is the substantial change because I, I know that some of those permitting fees are not accumulated, that those don't come through the village, they're paid outside of the village.
But if we focus on the eight units?
That would not be substantial, no.
Okay. All right. So I think I'm going to, uh, uh, make that motion to, oh, Johnny? Yeah.
When you say the eight units, I just want to clarify. If it's for the eight units and they get their engineering done and they come back with a twelve inch, like I suspect they're going to, that tap fee for a twelve inch, even though it's only going to feed the eight units because they're, they're building it for the twenty-two units, that tap fee is actually two hundred and sixty thousand four hundred and forty-five dollars just for the sewer. So are we only giving them fifty thousand? And then they've got to pay the other money? How are we doing that? Because they're not going to put in just a six inch or they're not going to just put in a four inch for eight units. They're going to want to build it for the twenty-two. So are we just turning the eye?
Which is what I feel like you explained at the last meeting.
What's that?
I think, I said, I feel like you explained it at the last meeting.
Correct. But if you're only waiving fifty thousand dollars, then when they go to tap in, do they tap into twelve inch, which is two hundred and sixty thousand?
Because that's what they're going to have to put in there because, because that's the capacity.
Correct. That's why I was saying that I needed the, because even if they do the minimum, let me just say this, even if they do the minimum and they got eight units with three-quarter inch water line, they got one unit that's got to have a separate inch and a half water line on top of the three-quarter for the ADU because they rent that as an ADU unit. And then eight units at their bare minimum of, for what they consider for a sewer line, you're talking fifty-four thousand seven hundred and eighteen dollars. So therefore it still does not cover, the fifty thousand still does not cover that amount. And that's just water and sewer. That's if they just did it for eight units.
So, go ahead Gavin.
So the way I understood where we landed in the last meeting was that there was a little bit of art involved here, that we had things we needed to figure out.
Correct.
And so I, I mean, I'll just speak for myself to answer your question. I'm under the impression that we're waiting for more information to figure it out, that we were essentially saying, hey, we know we're going to commit something.
Okay.
And that we're going to have things we have to figure out for our budget, that we know that there are budgetary impacts and that none of this is expected to come this budget year, but next budget year. So I totally understand that you're saying, hey, what's going to happen with the rest of it? And I think the answer is right now, we don't know yet, but we were waiting to hear what else there's going to be that's going to figure out. Cause it, for instance, let's say that they only need fifty, let's, let, I think you could make an argument that if it costs fifty-four thousand dollars for the tap fees that would, it would cost for four units, maybe there's a way from an accounting perspective, from a fundraising perspective, they can essentially segment out that chunk of the cost for this phase and have another, I'm just, I don't know for sure, just the way that budgets tend to work, these kinds of things may be possible. So that's where I thought we left things was that we were checking to see if that was possible because they were saying that if they didn't get that kind of leeway now, that it, it could significantly impact the prospect of the project at all, just, just from a timeless perspective. So that's all to say, I'm under the impression that we don't know the answer yet, but I think it's good that we continue to flag that it's not, not solved.
I just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that the language, I read the language too, and it says tap fee and then it says don't exceed, uh, fifty thousand dollars. I just want to make sure that we don't separate those two, that the max, uh, that you're talking about right now for water and sewer is fifty thousand.
Right.
Because we don't know until they have their engineering done.
I don't, I mean, we could watch it again. I don't think, I think everybody up here was totally clear that it was not going to cost fifty thou, it was going to cost a lot more than that. We were just recognizing that we were trying to get something that could make it not kill the deal right now.
And I think related to that and what Carmen was getting at was that understanding that, you know, with an understanding that's going to be more units, we want to, you know, do it the right way. The reason why I brought up the, like, highlighting the first phase of the project is because there's an expectation of coming back for an additional ask. So I think it makes sense to clarify that, um, in, in this resolution. So, um, but yeah, but we do not want you to like put in a substandard, you know, uh, set and then like, you know, change that out. Yeah, so I think that's the, thank you.
So I think I can make that a little clearer when I change section one around a tad to drop in your language, uh, into the water and sewer fund to, to, for phase one, eight rental units of the, uh, Home Inc. Cascades project in an amount not to exceed. So that the, in an amount not to exceed comes at the end. It's, we, we, we see that it's covering all of the preceding and then I would, I guess then drop it in again to section two, submit tap fee, tap fee requests for phase one of the Cascades project and then drop it up again in the title.
Right.
As we just did. So I can make all of those changes and I, I don't think they're substantive, um, because it sounds to me like everyone understands. We don't have all of the numbers, but this is where council is sitting at this point in terms of the max.
And then my understanding is we're securing phase one funding right now. Okay. Okay. Um, all right. So I think I've made a motion to amend to, you know, again, emphasize that this is for phase one, the first eight units. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Um, all right. So let's vote on that first. Um, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Um, yeah.
Sorry, can I just ask a, a, a question to put on staff's radar just at, at some point? So I, this is going to be an issue that'll come up, it sounds like, in the future, right? How many cap fees of what cost, et cetera? So just, there's no time, just at some point, I guess I'd be interested in how much money are we bringing in, like the volume of projects for, um, of like, of revenue from tap fees and other related, like basically what I'm wondering is, is could we add like essentially an affordable developer, affordable housing development fee onto essentially a market rate developers', um, costs? And I'm wondering what the, just like, how many projects are there and what would it take to have that actually matter financially? Is that making sense?
You're asking about impact fees.
Sure. I don't know what they're called, but-
There'd be a, a discussion to have, uh, how to structure that.
Okay. So if there's any information on that that could be provided, I would be interested.
Really quickly too, also, um, to be clear, and Johnny, please correct me if I'm not correct. These are fees that are, that don't get recouped. Is that right? So once, once those are done, that's done and we don't see, the village doesn't see any, is that right? So once the-
Once, once the tap fees are paid, is that what you're asking?
Right.
It's a one-time fee and what we're doing is we're covering the added costs, it's untake for the pipe, the plants, the chemicals and all that. That's what the one-time fee is. It's a capacity fee.
Okay.
Cause we had to make sure that we have enough capacity.
Never be seen or heard from again.
Correct.
Okay.
Well.
I mean, I, I mean, so I'm sorry that I, that I said it that way, but not really.
I don't think it was bad to say it that way. See, I mean, I think the laugh was just like, that's the hope, but maybe not the reality.
Right.
Definitely. Right, that sewer line is going to debait, man.
Mitzi, come on up.
Uh, Mitzi Miller, uh, resident of Yellow Springs. I realize that, you know, we've given Home Inc. thirty thousand last year, forty thousand this year and we, through the Affordable Fund. And, um, with budget restraints, it's just amazing to me that now we're looking at, um, waiver, uh, issues and tap fee issues. And, um, this is just for one segment of this plan. And they'll be asking again for more money. And as a taxpayer, you know, I, I, I believe, um, there's a real issue here. And, um, why one particular organization gets so much finance from our village. Thank you.
All right. Thanks Mitzi.
Is anyone else building affordable housing?
Right.
I mean, it's just, that's it. That's, Mitzi, that's the, that's the dynamic. There's nobody else building affordable housing. There, I think council has said clearly in goals, we want to see affordable housing. The only option, I can see you smiling, Jose, and it's true, is that we have, that we invest in loss and place. It's true. There are other people who provide other units that are arguably affordable in terms of actively acting as a developer for affordable housing. Is there anybody else? Who could?
Other than us, no.
Right.
There are opportunities.
So just to say, that's-
We're new to the game. We just started.
We're new to the game. We just started. I mean,
I just want to say that's all, that's what's going on is that we're trying to figure out how do we make this a, more, how do we have more affordable units? This is the game in town. I understand. If they, we would love.
Yeah, they're welcome to come.
Love to hear more projects. I know I would love to hear about more affordable housing, housing projects going on in the village.
If, if more affordable housing organizations want to come to Yellow Springs, we're definitely open to it. But so far, no one has been very interested, at least over the last several decades, except for the eighties when Al Gore tried to do it.
Well, I think we're, we remain open and that was, you know, the Lawson Place example is a great, you know, experiment. I, I don't want us to forget that there are other make the case aspects like the property and income tax that's brought into town. You know, the fact that like any kind of construction or activity brings revenue and tax revenue as well. And, and again, that we're, you know, building a community that can sustain our utilities and whatnot. So this does remind me, Emily, that make the case document, let's make sure through Judy that that's in the next packet, just to like highlight that again, because we've been talking about this, I guess for a couple of months now. And I'm sure if the paper doesn't have that already, they would want some of those numbers as well. So but Mitzi, thanks for bringing that up. But I, I think, I think the important thing is, I think most of us agree we need more housing to sustain our community. And then we're very open to how we make that happen. Jessica?
Jessica Thomas, speaking as a private citizen. So I am in favor of council, again, speaking as a private citizen, moving forward with helping Homing out. And I would just like to note that according to the auditor's website, in 2022, Homing Properties paid 113,789 in property taxes in 22, or 2022. And of that, the village gets 14,716. So if the village were to just divert the property taxes from Homing houses to affordable housing, like eventually they would pay for the donations and types of things that the village is giving to them. So I just want you all to really think about how investing in affordable housing is investing in our community. There are some horrible misconceptions about people who live in Homing housing. And they do pay their fair share. And I hope that Yellow Springs continues to support that despite some folks who don't want to.
All right. Thanks, Jessica. Anything else? Okay. Judy, let's go ahead and do a roll call on this.
So you're voting on the amended?
I thought we already voted on the amendment.
So right.
Okay. So yeah, yeah. So on the final resolution, yeah, amended, yeah.
Yep. DeBor Leonard.
Yes.
McQueen.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
House.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution 202334. We can do by title only.
This is approving a grant to Yellow Springs Pride in support of Pride Week activities.
Can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. All right. So we had a very robust conversation at the last meeting. I think, you know, maybe more than anything, I'm just going to reiterate that, what I kind of said at the top of the meeting. You know, we have tried to like kind of figure out what events cost the village for a variety of reasons. One, because it's our responsibility to taxpayers. Two, because we have challenges around the budget. But at the same time, we understand how important events are to having a healthy, thriving community. So really in looking at, you know, how we track these costs, you know, one is to make sure we, you know, have an understanding of donations that we're making. That hasn't changed our practice from supporting great events like YS Pride or Juneteenth, or MLK Junior Day, or Street Fair or whatnot. But at some point, maybe we'll keep it for the next meeting, I do want to talk about, process was brought up at the last meeting and I think the process is pretty simple. I mean, I, I guess if you're having an event, you have to get a permit. So that those permit instructions can highlight, you know, some of the things around vendor fees and some of the other things that we've like brought forward. You still come to village council and ask for a donation to your event. And so my understanding is, Street Fair hasn't done that yet, but I think we're going to have that happen at the next meeting. So again, I think we should have like a process for all these events where we understand what the cost is. We get a request to support. And then that also helps the organization understand how the village is sponsoring that event. All right. So, so I think in this case, we've kind of indicated for YS Pride that the cost to manage that event from the village side are well above 5,000. And so I think that's where these funds are going to go. I don't know that we need to get granular about that. And again, you know, I think just in terms of that, like request for a process, we can, I don't, I don't think it's that complicated, but I think we can get that together for folks in the future. So they just know, like, fill out your form, ask council if they can like support at what level and then go from there. Did you want to?
No, I was just, I was going to reiterate part of your message about the process that in the past years, when we have made such sizable contributions, we've had it here at the council meeting. But moving forward, we are looking at streamlining the process and have it be detailed as possible. Just last week and, and again, this morning, connected with Paige about coming back to council with a draft ordinance. In fact, I was waiting during my manager's report, I was going to talk about the special events committee. And I will request that we have a council member join that special events committee and a citizen so that we can have all the inputs as we bring forward and ordinance and all the procedural aspects of implementing special event protocols, special event planning and associated fees and costs to that. So we, we've certainly been talking about it for, for a while. We're trying to streamline the process and I think we'll end up in a better place overall. Related to what's before you tonight, the 52, the $5,000 for Pride, I'll, I'll report back that I had a meeting with Amy Wamsley, Philip and Heather to talk about the expected cost. We provided an estimate to them over a week ago. They've accepted the estimate. So we worked out where the $5,000 is going to primarily cover our public works expense or public safety expense. To highlight what that public work expense looks like, because we're closing South Walnut and, and Short Street on Saturday, there's church service on Sunday and we don't want to get between, you know, folks and their worship day. We're going to have public works folks come in at the end of Saturday night to close. That's overtime. So just to highlight, we don't need to get into the minutia, but we've walked through those things, those items with pride. And we have an understanding that we're good to move forward as the sponsorship has been presented.
Cool. And so we're going to use Short Street?
We close the streets. Yes. We, we got a Walnut and Short Street.
All right. I'm excited.
Yes, Marianne.
Yeah. So it seems like there are at least three things. There's the cost that we incur on putting on an event. There's a fee schedule that you had developed. And then there's how, how we determine our donations. So, so when you say you're going to come with an ordinance, is that ordinance going to have, has your thought that that ordinance is going to have all three of those pieces in it? And are you going to use exactly the information that we've already gotten or say a little more?
Yes. So you, you highlighted three things. The cost that goes into a service, the associated fees and what council is willing to sponsor or forgive. That third item is really more of your discretion and your authority, what you're willing to, to cover for that. What we're going to commit, what we're committed to providing, expanding on the research that we provided, outlining the procedural steps to securing a permanent, planning for an event, what will be allowed, what were estimated costs for these activities are. So from us, you are going to get a better, better outlook on what those costs would be, what the recovery fee would be. We're, we're approaching this as that there's no way of recovering 100% of our expenses. And we're not approaching it as looking to recover 100% of our expenses, but we're all looking to recover some of it. Because we understand the importance and the significant, I mean, of these events are on our community. So you'll get those two things from us. On the third piece, that's when, or what council is willing to sponsor or waive. That's really council's authority and I think that's, that's where you come in. Now, we're, we're, I mean, I'm asking for a council member to participate in the process so that we have staff, community input and council reflecting those views. Paige, did I miss anything?
Okay. And I think the other way that we hit that third thing is through that process, that's going to hit, you know, that piece around how council is going to make a decision or whatever. So I, I think we can hit it, you know, in the ordinance, but again, I, I think it still needs to be the case like we've done in the past where, you know, if you are having a major event, you come, I mean, you put it in your permit form, but you ask council to support that. I mean, I think we've got to.
And then when we give a grant, do we actually give money and then they pay us? Or do we just forget, forgive part of the cost?
Yeah. So I think it, I think it's going to vary by, vary by event. So for example, in the past, we have paid for porta potties. That's an hour, that's a, that's, the event organizers not incurring that expense, but we are. You know, examples have been Pride, Porch Fest and so on. So there are going to be, there are going to be times where that expense is a hard cash.
Speakers we've done.
Speakers, yeah. So I think it's going to vary by, vary by event. In terms of how we book it on, on our end, that's an accounting process that Amy will figure out how to, how to allocate those expenses. Carmen, did you have a question?
Well, it's just varying by event, how we incur, like what, how we determine what's a hard cost and what isn't, varying by event. I don't, I don't, I'm not really clear on that.
Okay.
But then you said on that Seattle thing, huge town, whatever. But it was pretty, it was a pretty good guide on about exactly how to do it. And of course, we're talking about a huge scale.
Yeah.
But that's a good example. We could just take what we need from it and make it smaller because it's already there.
Right, right.
It's already, it's all, it's, I mean, it's, it's really all there. Now we're talking about like Live Nation events and iHeartRadio events and huge concerts at big, huge venues. But all the information is there. If you want to have an event, this is step one, step two, it's just laid out.
Correct, correct.
I also think what's nice about Seattle is like, okay, it's a different town, but they still like scaled it based on different sizes of events. And I think you mentioned at the last meeting that it was more data driven at least, you know, as opposed to some of the other. I will say Carmen, you know, one of the things that we've seen in the past, like when I think about with Kwanzaa, I guess it was, you know, they also like broke out like speaker fees and whatnot. So we still have that form to use, right? So I think it is a combination of what are some of these costs around just public safety?
I've used that form. That form, that form needs to be reworked.
Yeah. Well, and actually I agree, we should review it.
Yeah.
But I think, you know, so we've got like kind of two, we've got the public safety and public works piece. And then we've also got like some of these hard asks around like, can you support a speaker or whatnot? But I don't feel like the, the process really needs to change that much. I think the only difference is now we're sort of thinking about these other fees. And then as a side note, remember, we kind of had a consensus around, we were trying to shift mostly to in-kind services for events. So I think that's an important guideline.
That is.
Yeah, good.
Sorry, I was, I was just going to follow up with, what did you say, that important guideline as it relates to expenses? And this is where they varies by events, right? Because there's different groups that request different things and some are very straightforward. Others where there isn't as straightforward, there leaves room for creativity or us having to figure things out. This process is going to help streamline that. So we, there's less figuring it out. If you're closing a street, it's going to take six barricades on each side or whatnot, like that's going to be expelled. And so we don't need to figure out how many folks we need to move out, what do we need to equip and move that. Actually later tonight, we're talking about barriers. So as a way to get better at these things, so.
Gavin, go ahead.
So I think a comment from you earlier, Jose addressed this, but Marianne, in your memo, you had raised this and it's come up here also, I think Brian might kind of reference it in your comments. So Marianne, in your memo, you talked about at the, you know, at, during the budget process that we asked staff to provide information about the costs basically for these events. And then said that we had got that at the last meeting. I'm just making sure, I didn't miss anything, right? What we got at the last fee, at the last meeting was a fee schedule. But we have, we haven't received information about what the actual costs are of events?
Yeah, I'll need to, I need to review my notes to see what invoices we have. We, we do have them. I know Johnny prepared invoices, Paige prepared invoices in terms of what numbers are. I don't recall right now when we sent that over to you. We have them. But I will make sure that you get copies of what the team put together last year on what those costs are. I'll make sure you get the estimate what the team put together for this upcoming event. And so you, you will have that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, one of the things that is referenced in this resolution is that the funds are going to be dispersed upon receiving of the invoice. So we're going to generate a invoice of actual cost, how much time each personnel assigned to the project worked and whatnot. So you're, we're going to, we're going to be booking that in our accounting system, more diligent moving forward and generating these invoices.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. So I, I want to highlight three key points. Okay. Number one, none of this is saying like, everybody's got to pay like tens of thousands of dollars to have an event. All right. We are just trying to figure out what these events cost, number one. Number two, it helps us then make decisions around donations, how the village should be recognized. It also like lets taxpayer know, taxpayers know, like, you know, are, are we doing the right thing for the village? And then thirdly, I love that the committee is going to involve a council member. Because, you know, I mentioned, one of the reasons that we had 25 more minutes added to our meeting last time was we didn't vet the YS Pride event prior to the meeting. So we can't really do that here. So it's, I'm glad that a council member is going to be part of that activity. Okay. Anything else? Okay. So, yes, Jessica.
Jessica, I have a response. I don't know if what your question is going to be, but I, I've, I meant to follow up to an email you sent earlier, so I'll state it now.
Okay.
Do you mind? Okay. So, so Jessica had asked earlier if what we were getting in return for the sponsorship, the presenting sponsorship level, and I just want to reiterate that the council is not going to receive a lot of the benefits that are listed in that sponsorship agreement. So for example, one of the benefits is 10 beer, 10 beer garden tickets. Those are things that we're not going to grab and disperse out. So there are certain things of value in that sponsorship level that would not be appropriate for us to take possession of, such as the unlimited beer drinking or 10. We're not going to take that. So we'll take the recognition, but we're not taking the, the benefits that come with those cups.
So actually that was not my question. I do have just two kind of brief questions. First of all, it says that the money is coming from the Boards and Commissions Fund. I was wondering how much money is in that fund right now? And then my second question, I think Gavin already asked it, but if you are already sharing with him the estimate of what Pride is going to cost the village. You said in your earlier comments, you already shared that with Amy Wamsley. I'd be happy to have that number also.
We'll share that with you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. 202335, we can do by title only.
Okay. I'm going to recommend that we not review this legislation at this point because I know Carmen and Johanna have things that they still feel need to be worked out. And in fact, Johanna has come here to explain that. Johanna Schultz, if you'd like to have a brief explanation.
So if, I, I understand, I would like to just move to table. Because I don't think that I want to be here for, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to get out of here now.
We're going to, we're going to get out of here at 9:30.
Okay.
So don't worry about that.
Yeah, yeah.
But I think, I think that makes sense. Johanna, did you want to say something tonight or? Okay. Okay, good. Okay. So motion to table. Is there a second?
You haven't read it in.
Oh.
Oh, you got to read it. Oh, yeah, yeah. Sorry about that. Sorry, Judy.
Okay.
Do it off the next one.
All right. So what do we do? We read it in by title only?
No, you didn't.
Okay.
We didn't.
All right, let's do it.
Well, no, you don't have to table it this way. You can just move it tonight.
All right. You're good with that? Okay.
It's easier.
All right. Then let's do that. Okay. And then go to 202336.
All right. This is authorizing the village manager to enter into a contract with Digital Ally for in-car dash camera systems for the Yellow Springs Police Department.
And I get a motion? Can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
Okay, all right, Josue?
Yeah, thank you. As you know, if you've had the pleasure of seeing any of our in-dash cam posted on Facebook, you know, we got a bit of outdated technology. So we're running against some challenges on our in-dashed cameras. It's outdated technology. We also have accompanying software license and servers that need upgrades, that are, the cost far exceeds, uh, just purchasing a cloud base in-dash car system. So Paige is gonna take it away there, and it's in our budget, so.
Thanks.
Uh, all right. So as you guys know, we acquired body worn cameras earlier this year from the same company. So also, as you know, prior to budgeting this past year, we did an inventory of all of our capital assets, including our in-car camera systems, our dash cameras as it were referred to. Best of our recollection, because I couldn't find much documentation, they were purchased between 2010, 2017. Some of them have a shelf life of as much as five years, but we are already seeing the wear and tear. We have numerous ones, um, I know at least one car right now, it's not even actively working, which is of course liability, could also cause transparency issues and mistrust with the public. Somebody does a records request, "Oh, we don't have the video." It's just not working, so. Um, also, one of the features of the in-car cameras is that upon activating the lights, it'll automatically sync with the body worn cameras, which means officers don't have to activate their, their in-car cameras and their body cameras. It's all in one. This is also, in a way, a cost savings, because if we do not move forward with the upgrade to the in-car systems, we have to upgrade the hard server, the server that we currently have for our current systems, which is as much in year one as it is in year one to upgrade the system. So high-level summary there, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions?
This is in our budget, right? This is, I feel like we talked about it during, okay, just making sure.
Anything else? All right.
Thanks.
Thanks, Paige. Okay, uh, any questions or comments from citizens? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, 202337, we can do that by title as well.
There you go. This is approving a preliminary plat plan for Home Inc. Cascades PUD.
All right, can I get a motion?
I move.
Again.
All right, Denise?
So, um, the March 14th, was it March 14th? I guess it's been a while. Yeah, the Planning Commission met and made the recommendation to council to approve a preliminary PUD for Home Inc. Now, this property sandwiched between Marshall and Herman Street is already rezoned PUD. Last time they came to us was in 2019. So they're back. The, the project is scaled down, uh, as you recall, maybe remember, it was like a 54-unit, three-story multi-family building. Now, it's, it's going to be 32 units that are built out in four phases. And the first phase, as you were talking tonight, eight rental units. Phase two will have six rental units, phase three, eight rental units, and phase four, 10 home ownership units. So the only variations that the Planning Commission made in their recommendation was for a modification of the minimum parking requirements. This is a senior housing project, so they would have been required to have 42. They're asking for 30. And Planning Commission was okay with that. They, they also approved the density of 32 units on 1.8 acres. See, uh, there was, I don't know if I need to go into, you've seen everything. There's a lot of little things in here that they also added, just about stormwater calculations and things like that will be needed for the final plan review. But Planning Commission is making the recommendation to council to approve this preliminary PUD.
All right, thanks Denise. Uh, questions or comments? Okay. Well, I would think, uh, this has been on our, our radar for a while, so I'm hoping that we are gonna move it forward. Um, okay, so I think all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, last piece of legislation, 202338.
I told you, Emily. I got to tell you. Wow.
Things are quick.
At least up here.
Well, thanks for being here, Emily. Yes.
This is authorizing the village manager to act as a fiscal agent for grant received from the State Homeland Security Program.
All right, can I get a motion?
I move.
Second.
Okay.
We'll tag, we'll tag team this with, with Paige. As you know, we have a great relationship with Emergency Management Agency at the county level. Ethan has been working with Paige about finding resources, not just for us, but that benefit the entire community. And we're jumping on this opportunity that will be 100% reimbursable in the states.
Yeah, I know, that's the best point right there, 100% reimbursable.
I love that point, yeah.
Free stuff that keeps us safe, right? So this is actually, I put it in the bottom of my memo. I should've put it at the top. Just wanna highlight again, cost savings to the village long-term. Johnny and I have already had many discussions about additional needs for event planning, including the purchase of potentially more concrete barriers. I don't know if many of you know, but we did have a couple incidents at last year's street fair that were, uh, hair-raising, to say the least. And these barriers are a little bit of a response to that as well. So any questions about what we're trying to acquire? Hopefully, I highlighted it.
So do we, oh, so you, we've been using cement barriers, and what you're looking at is something that's portable, so.
Yeah, it's a portable, uh, so the, the best example, and I, I don't wanna commit to necessarily this specific brand, but the best example is Meridian is the, the brand name of this particular barrier. And they stop up to a 3,500-pound vehicle on a dime. Um, yeah, very, very secure barriers that can be moved by one person. So it's pretty impressive technology, if you wanna go to their website. I'm also happy to send the link of some of the videos that they have available, if you're interested in that kinda watching crashes and such.
Well, does it get like attached into the...
It doesn't, no. It's on wheels, the way it transported. It has a single lever that you put in and, and wheel it in, put it right in place. So, I know, should ask more than $90,000 or something like that.
And I'm not finding, what was the, uh, so there were the, you know, 19 or so barricades, and what was the other thing? Oh, something to move them on, is that?
Yeah, because, because they are, there's so many of them, and for them to be quickly deployed, a trailer, yeah, a trailer to haul them around in, so.
All right, cool.
All right.
Uh, looks like Mitzi's got a question. Thanks, Paige.
So any event like the Pride event, when you're closing streets, that those would be used?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
Anything we can keep the public safe, including Johnny's guys, while he's out working on the streets and stuff, so.
And so just for folks that didn't hear, Mitzi just asked, uh, can these be used for any sort of events? And it sounds like they can be easily deployed. So, all right, thanks.
Thank you.
And 100% reimbursable. Okay, uh, any other questions or comments? Okay, uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we are now into citizen concerns. This is the point on the agenda where we welcome any comments, up to three minutes, for any item that's not on the agenda. So do we have any citizen concerns? Oh, Jessica, come on up.
Jessica Thomas, I guess this is a news-related question, just two things that have previously been on agendas that said, that you said we were gonna relook at but haven't happened so far this year. The first is the utility roundup program. There were some really, really good recommendations from Elise Burns when that policy was looked at again last year. Some of, most of the things were adopted, but some were not. I was just in the, at, during that conversation, you said you were going to look at them within the next year or so, and I wondered if that time could be now, when people aren't, when you did, like, I'm sorry, trying to think of how to say this. During the time of year where if a utility gets, if electric specifically gets shut off, it might not mean somebody sitting in their house cold. I'm hoping that we can be proactive about possibly having any of these changes. And the second one was looking at, um, the stormwater fees that were enacted. And during that conversation, there was the potential of eventually doing some stormwater mitigation. Not fees, but like, I guess, credits for citizens who are trying to mitigate stormwater coming off of their property already. And I was wondering if council had any intent of looking at that again anytime soon.
Okay, cool. Yeah, I think utility roundup, let's have an update in your report next.
We're, we've, we've been talking about utility roundup as a utility roundup 2.0, thermostat's dedicated revenue from Cella Rec. So it's gonna come up as part of our Cella Rec policy and proposal. So that's been in the works for some time, so we'll, we'll have that. I think we, that comes back May 15th.
Okay.
Um, so we'll, we'll have a conversation.
Right.
Around that.
And then...
Stormwater things, um...
Well, let's have, like, let's have in your next manager's report just kinda like what the vision is now that we've, you know, got that, um, you know.
For stormwater.
Fund in place, yeah. And then, um, but I think it is interesting that Jessica specifically focused on, um, you know, is there a way to like balance that out with people that are mitigating their stormwater contributions? So, um, so yeah, let's put that in the next questions. Okay, any other citizen concerns? All right, we do not have any special reports, so I think that moves us to the manager's report. And remember, Marion wants to highlight Fairfield Pike, which I know Carmen and I do as well, and probably Gavin.
Yes, uh, well, I think I had a conversation with, with you guys about providing, uh, things that are happening down the pipeline among those, is the gas aggregation, so you're seeing this more full-up report, so that when we're bringing things to you, sort of are caught up to where we are on things. So I've got that, I've got staffing updates, health insurance, the agri area projects. I think the agri area projects are gonna require some significant time down the road for us. So I've got that information included in there. If you see something that you have a question now, please let me know. You can always email me and say if you wanna check in about these projects. So I've got that. So do you have any questions on the manager's report before we transition to Fairfield Pike and Special Events Committee? Any questions on the report? Okay. All right, so then let's start with Fairfield Pike. Paige left.
She snuck out.
She snuck out right on, on this piece. Um, I think I'll start off with saying that I, that Jason's email highlights that we've seen some of the intervention. There was a couple weeks where we had mayor's court filled with speeders. So we had, we certainly increased our, our intervention efforts to catch more speeders. Obviously, there's a behavior change that needs to happen. The ways to get into that behavior change, we looked at stop signs, Green County engineered, strongly advised against the stop sign, the four-way stop, because it would create greater liability for us. They've been proven to not slow down the traffic in those kinds of areas that instead they create more crashes. So we're advising against putting a stop sign. So we're back to some boots-on-the-ground ticketing people. We've had some successes, but the minute that the police officers are not there, well, guess what happens? Speeding picks up, or folks resume. So, uh, I know Carmen, you had emailed about setting up a meeting page. Uh, Marion, you had requested additional information. We're gonna be back at this to try to tackle other, implement other efforts to get at that behavior.
Well, I also sent that email to the act of transportation.
Okay.
I mean, it, it's unacceptable that we have a dangerous street. And it's dangerous because people don't obey the speed limit. I mean, it's also dangerous because it's sort of narrow, no berm, no sidewalk. But we can't just have a police officer standing, you know, or there, it's not, there must be something that we can do.
Well, I mean, so one of the things that I'll say is this, so optics, we have officers posted on different sides of town. Sometimes they're hang, like, there'll be officers, two of them at Speedway, whatever. So we have, and, and like, this is about optics. If you have somebody, like on 68, there was always an officer. In the last couple years, every, you know, people know this, either at YSI or at the Dollar General posted up. People stopped speeding. It became known as a speed trap. Traffic has slowed down significantly there. So having an officer on patrol on Fairfield Pike more often than just an hour a day will, will deter that behavior, I think. And no, you know, we can't do the stop sign thing. Maybe an overhead red flashing light or something, because I live in the, I live off, I have to, to get into my plat, I have to go on, like, get off of Fair Acres. So Fair Acres and Fairfield, Fairfield Pike, it's, I've gotten, I've almost gotten hit coming out of the plat. And it's, it's because people are speeding, and they think that it's a rural route. And around here, you can go 55 or 50 on rural routes, and it's not, it's residential. But if it becomes known as a speed trap, that's gonna change behavior.
Yeah.
If you start getting, you know, if people start getting ticketed and they have to pay every time, they have to show up in mayor's, mayor's court if they're inconvenienced, that's what, in my, that's what changes behavior. There's otherwise, like those flashing signs that says like, you know, 25, just saying. And it's like, oh, eh, it's cute, just saying. But that's just, that's a sign telling you to slow down. It's not an officer handing you a ticket.
Right.
And I'm not particularly pro, like, ticketing people, but it's gotten to the point where, you know, animals, pets have been killed, children have, you know, it's been, there've been near misses. And it's, and because it's on that side, it's on my side of town, I see it happening like every, every single day.
Yeah. On the topic, you said tickets work. Yes, they do work. A couple months ago, we had looked at a change of law, and Amy, I don't know if you wanna weigh in on this. We had looked at creating a speed trap, and the law has changed around our ability to put unstaffed speed traps, so the speed cameras. We looked at it, there were some issues. We could do it, um, but it would mean we would lose some local government funds, dollar for dollar.
What you mean? Like, having, to have an officer?
Whatever we collect.
Wait, to have, wait, to have an officer there like a couple hours a day and then?
No.
Whatever we collect for those.
Cameras, though.
No, we can.
We can.
We can.
But just whatever we collect, we have to deduct from our local government allocation, which we actually may end up doing better.
Oh, maybe.
With, yeah. Um, but yeah, that was, that was one thing, I think it is probably, you know, maybe Amy, do you wanna come up and just like brief us on like what, what we can and can't do? So I, my understanding is if we have a speed camera, we have to have an officer there to validate it, or no?
I believe the law's changed on that.
Okay.
So you don't have to have an officer present. There's nuances in the law that I can't speak to off the top of my head about how you have to file, used to be you could handle a citation like that internally. Now, I believe everything has to be filed in municipal courts, so there are court costs involved in moving forward with it. It's not as easy and expensive as it once was. So you'd need to contract with a company that sells the red light cameras, or they're always referred to as red light cameras, but they are speed cameras, of course, as well. So you'd need speed cameras. You can mount, they can be mounted on intersections, or there's mobile ones. And then we'd have to give consideration to all the nuances of what you'd have, what that would mean. And one of the big things is the local government funding. Anything, you have to, there's quarterly or maybe twice-a-year reports that have to be filed with the state of Ohio, and then whatever you've collected based on those cameras is gonna get deducted from the local government funding that's given to the village. But I can put a memo together on it of what the steps you'd have to take to move in that direction, and then what you would have to do to stand up the program.
So, but like, but versus like having an officer there, like, yeah, like in the morning and in the afternoon, when people are like speeding, like, between like seven and nine, done. It's ridiculous. Between four and six, it's ridiculous. And that would be probably, I mean, I don't know, maybe that would be less expensive than getting speed cameras and doing all that technology stuff? That's just my opinion, I don't know.
And if you want the citation, if, if you'd like the citations to be filed in mayor's court, doing it with an officer is the best way to do that.
Yeah.
I, I view having an officer there as a temporary. I think there are some things, whether it's extending the bump out.
Yeah, traffic calming.
Or other things. But I'm hopeful that Chris Bonjourno might be able to help us think.
Yeah.
That's why I thought active transportation.
Yeah, I'm glad you're making that recommendation. I had a note on that, too. I do think Fairfield Pike is already very narrow, so I, I, I mean, traffic calming, I'm wondering, but, you know.
I think that, I think that for the person that wrote the letter, like, it's, having an officer there, making an officer available during those hours is gonna maybe stop someone's cat from getting hit. making an officer available during those hours is going to maybe stop someone's cat from getting hit. And I think that yes, it needs to go to active transportation. I don't have any, I don't disagree about that at all. But in the interim, you know, there are people, the people are losing their animals and people are having like near miss car accidents.
I'll definitely assign more officers, um, to that, to that post for more, more speed, speeding. Um, and.
And why is, and why can't we have a stop sign there?
The, the, the recommendation from the county engineer Stephanie Golf was that because it, that, that type of intervention doesn't specifically address high speed routes. It would not incentivize people slowing down. They would actually be incentivized to run the light. That could result in more accidents.
There's a longer story there, which is that you'd have to get township cooperation to get the signage started out in the township to get its awareness and slowed traffic on the way in. So that's the bigger story.
So maybe that's part of what we need to do is work with the township because the signage is an issue, I think.
We did, we did upgrade the signs and some signs are going to be replaced by Stephanie Golf if they haven't already been replaced. And that is indicating that the speed slows down into the, the corporate limit. So that sign was put up. And, uh, so we have updated signs and there was more work that Stephanie was going to do. So I'll check where that status of that work is, but we did put up reduce speed ahead sign so that people have a queue to slow down ahead versus that sign was faded or didn't exist. So.
Let him get a ticket.
Okay. So we should talk to the township. I guess I'm not convinced that we shouldn't have a stop sign there, but you know, I, I, I mean, I respect Stephanie. I think she's, you know, very knowledgeable. But I have always wanted to look into the speed camera thing because I actually believe that if we set up a couple, um, where people come into town, we probably, uh-oh, that's why she came in to like nail me on this. I thought I was going to get away with it. Um, I was just talking about, I mean, and I mentioned this at active transportation, one of the meetings, which is I, my sense, and I'm not, we're never sure, is that we would probably collect enough funds to help with traffic calming initiatives and also build capacity. Um, so yes, definitely Amy, a follow-up on that so that we can start to talk about that. Makes sense to me. But I think, uh, you know, if regularly if people knew that, you know, you're going to go through that radar camera, it's going to make a difference. So, um, okay. Well, this is good. So we're going to do something.
Yeah. So. Are we going to do more beats? And, um, Paige, I don't know if you want to talk about your numbers. I just pulled it up as Brian was speaking. Where just details on the traffic infractions, traffic stops that we had just in that intersection or on Fairfield Pike, we're looking at 130 total traffic stops.
No, 130 details. So anytime we, um, so as you guys know, I'm very data, I'm very data driven. So the way we started taking in these complaints were, you know, if I received one, two complaints in the same area, I would request for our citizen, um, Joe, who has the speed trailer, which is actually owned by Joe, not owned by the village. And Joe will set that trailer up for us in periodic troublesome spots for the village. So I get a couple of complaints. I asked Joe to set that up. We'll leave that there for between four and six weeks. Once that's done, we pull the data off of that and that'll actually give me about a 60-page breakdown of how many cars are coming through there, how many are leaving there, what the highest speed is, lowest speed is. It'll give me the days of the week, the times of the day. And so I'm able to actually narrow it down to the, the days where the offenses are happening the most, the times of the day where it's happening the most, and then assign officers to details on those timeframes. So we've done rotating six-week details over the last year and a half. Um, of total, we've done 130. And those can range between 20 minutes all the way up to an hour, depending on how long the officer has available. Because as you guys know, there's oftentimes officers are by themselves, so they will sit out there unless they get pulled away. Uh, during those 130 details, they have made a total of 69 traffic stops. So, um, we have obviously been trying to put the work in to respond to the citizens and their, and their concerns. So, but as with any behavior, um, when, you know, mom and dad are away, the mice will play. So we leave and the behavior reoccurs.
How much, uh, for a ticket for one of those stops?
It depends.
On average?
Uh, 150.
150? Okay.
We had a few folks speeding over 20. We had one 25. What's that citation?
Uh, that's going to be 250.
So, so we, we should look into this because if you do the math, I mean, so let's just say it was like 100. I mean, we get about 140,000 from the local government fund?
About that much.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, I don't know. It might make sense, but we should talk about it. So.
We're talking about the red light cameras that another law allows us to do red light cameras, speeding cameras?
Gotcha.
Speeding cameras?
So if we had maybe like three at the main entrances and we could not have to deal with capacity and we'd probably collect more than we do get from the local government fund would be my guess. That we could like invest in traffic calming. So.
Is that something you could do?
So I thought you meant that they would subtract what we receive from our local government.
Yes.
Right.
They'll be offset.
But I, I wouldn't think that the red light cameras issuing the tickets and hauling through with anything. So you're still talking about a lot of backend work, correct?
I can't speak to that. I'm sorry. I don't.
I don't know. It's pretty automatic. Yeah.
Company, it was, it's not the village that's generating the ticket where it's happening in some part of the place. If they didn't charge it, they charge a fee for it. Or at least they have. I haven't worked with them ever like there in a while, but the last time I was doing one of those contracts, yes, there's a fee for, for a ticket and then there's possibly.
We'll look at it later. All right. Thank you.
Well, the other thing, uh, Amy, are we able to increase our speeding fees?
I don't know. This time I took a driver's test.
You know, because I, you know, a hundred dollars. You guys know I'm, I grew up in DC and DC is well-known for its effective use of red light cameras, P cameras and nocturnal red cameras. And the tickets aren't a hundred dollars. They're start at 250 is the lowest and it goes as high as a thousand dollars.
I think I paid a hundred and fifty all morning.
Uh-oh. See?
Five. It wasn't that. Well.
So when are you?
We need to have a like, a, a meeting, a subcommittee meet and then we can bring maximum.
So we need to have a sub, so we, we need to have a subcommittee meeting. So the people that live on Fairfield Pike right now, who are worried about their animals getting hit, we're having a subcommittee meeting before we talk about maybe more officer detail or host way.
No, no, I committed to that. We're going to get that.
Okay.
We're just trying to figure out if we can do something longer term. So.
Yeah, I think the committee is talking about the red light cameras and looking into that.
Cost benefits. Okay. All right. Good. Anything else on the manager's report?
We talked about the special events committee.
Oh, yeah.
Do I have a volunteer?
Well, if no one else, I'll do it. So. Okay. All right. Yeah. Carmen and I'll tag.
Okay. All right.
All right. Cool. Yeah. And if we can both make it.
There was there another request for the manager's report.
I think that was it.
Nope. Some new business.
New business, uh, film festival. So on the film festival, you brought that up.
Yeah.
The film festival, uh, and then there's the work session piece. On the film festival, I did attend a meeting with the, with the chamber of commerce. I offered the John Bryan Center as another site to buy a movie. Um, I will schedule a meeting with Eric, who is the person leading that effort. And we'll see what else is needed from the village. I indicated our support at the last meeting we had on this. I think it's, it's a great idea. We have filmmakers here and all kinds of very creative people. I, I was invited to a screening at the little art theater for jury duty and I'm stuck on that jury duty. Episode Carmen was there and I have, I have jury duty tomorrow.
Oh, in real life?
All right.
Yes, in real life. I was supposed to go today and I called and they said, oh, you'd show up tomorrow at 8:30. So I've got to be there tomorrow.
Your civic duty.
So, uh, so yeah, so I'll, I'll keep you abreast of that film festival. I think it's a good activity. We'll figure out the, the details of it.
Yeah. So again, they're targeting October and I'm really happy that we're thinking about Short Street now because that was one of the venues that they mentioned to do some like an outdoor screen.
Yeah. That didn't come up, but I'll, I'll, I'll discuss it with Eric, see where it goes.
I mean, they didn't finalize that, but they mentioned like potential venues.
I think an outdoor screen time makes sense.
Yeah.
Where is the right location for it?
Right.
Certainly. Um, good, good, good. Um, okay. Anything else on the manager's report? Okay. All right. Thank you.
I will just mention, because it's kind of in this context, uh, so I had a great meeting with Gina Marie, um, from a community foundation. And not only did she mention, uh, the film festival and opportunities there as well as, uh, and I think Gavin knows about this, like potential for potentially a big donor to support the guaranteed income. Um, but a third thing that she highlighted, um, and she's been talking with Osway, I guess the community foundation is they're interested in the, uh, the former school administration building. And I just want to say I love that idea and the idea that it could also be a venue for nonprofits. You know, they've thought about how that space could be allocated. They would work with us. We've talked about that could be another place for public restrooms. I love the idea of like using Short Street sometimes for events. You know, we don't have to close it off all the time, but especially in the summer. So anyway, I know you're already thinking about this, but I, you know, when we had that conversation, I thought a lot, saw a lot of opportunity.
Right. We've been talking about it for some time and we needed to make formal, formal discussions on it. And it sounds like you're ready to move forward in that direction. So certainly I, I can look to finalize that agreement with, with, uh, the community foundation and bring back a lease. In nutshell, if we're already talking about it, well, I, I would prefer to speak with Gina Marie to finalize some of the detail, but, uh, it would open up some more retail opportunities in the village if with this transition that happens on cost-wise, I think, uh, you know, we will definitely make a lot more money than the past arrangement of a $1 a year. So I think, uh, I think it could create both a revenue stream to support what is a historic building and, and the history and legacy of that building. While also providing great service to a community. So.
Yeah. And I'm glad you mentioned, because Gina Marie emphasized that point of opening up their current space, which was right on Dayton Street, which would be great for retail. So. Yeah. All right. Anything else?
I, I have one more thing.
Yeah.
Tomorrow's a special day. Other than I have jury duty. Well, no, it's not so special, but it's, uh, it's Denise's birthday tomorrow.
Wow.
So, so Brian.
Uh-oh.
I think you'll get, uh, your, everyone. You want to, we should sing happy birthday.
We should. All right. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Denise. Happy birthday to you. And many more. All right.
I was going to say, why don't you just wait till midnight?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Well, Brian rushed us through it. Nine o'clock, we're almost done.
See? All right. So it looks like Denise is ready for new business. Okay.
So as you know, um, last December, we finalized the PUD that had been sitting there for several, since 2018 at Millworks. And, uh, staff had talked about this with some neighbors, probably four or five years ago. In the comprehensive land use plan in 2010 and also in 2020, it suggests if you're going to expand at all, the, the central business district, you'd only expand, expand it to the north up to Millworks. And so when we did that, we looked at, well, what would that require? We would have to rezone a couple of, um, residential homes along railroad street. And, um, it just got to the point where, well, Steph finally thought, well, you know, what we could do is just with a PUD, we can have the, the existing underlying zoning of I-1, but also add in a, a business district zoning as well. So that's what we did for Millworks. What we want to do now is just tonight ask you, um, because in the PUD process, there is a requirement of size, five acres or more. We don't want it to be rejected based on that. So we're asking for you to allow us to move the process forward. So this isn't a vote to say yes or no on the PUD itself yet. Cause it has to go through planning commission and then back to you. This is just giving us the ability to explore it further.
And so it's, um, three parcels with two ownerships?
Two, yeah. Actually, um, the Bushes are here tonight. They have two parcels, Bushco. And then the other will be Massey's Creek Ventures, which Brian wasn't able to be here tonight, but he did say that, um, if, and the community wants an update, that they're hoping to be open by April, May. They're going to start here this summer on the internal construction of the lumber market eatery. So that's moving along and they're hoping within nine months they'll be open. So I'm, I'm just asking for your consideration to let us move forward with this and hopefully solve one of the issues that keeps coming up in the comp plans.
Sounds good to me. All right. Everybody's good? Okay. Sweet.
So if you would take a motion, that would be great.
Oh, you want a motion? All right. So a motion to support, uh, moving forward on exploring, uh, the PUD.
So you're moving to approve a PUD on less than five acres?
Five acres.
Oh, are we doing that right now? Okay.
Explore.
Explore.
Exploring it, right? Okay.
Are we doing a specific site or just in?
Okay.
I'm just asking for, okay, to.
Explore it. Yeah.
At this site.
Okay. And I think that's what I said. So you had a second.
Yeah. Okay. This one, this one and lumber.
Okay.
And even if you combine them all, they don't equal five acres. So.
Right. Okay. Uh, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay. All right. And then we were going to talk about work sessions. Hostway?
Yes. I, I've spoken with several of you about the work sessions. I think a lot of the challenges, and I think we can learn the last, last council meeting, there are few agenda items that we didn't vet through. I think having a standing 30-minute work session every council meeting gives us the flexibility to talk about specific issues and specific agenda items that are coming up. I think there are times when I, as the manager, am looking for feedback on a particular things that we get to manager's report and, you know, it's, it's nine o'clock and gosh, we had a long day. You have full-time jobs. And so we, 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 we rushed through the, that last part of that meeting. So I think a work session at the beginning of a council meeting gives us the opportunity to have a deeper dive about a topic or a future agenda item. And we can, we can coordinate a little better and reduce some of the anxiety and miscommunication on issues that happen in council meetings. And the beauty about the work session is, you know, we can, because we're not taking action on things, we can discuss more freely particular topics.
So then Judy or Amy, if we do this, is that, does it happen at seven? Does it happen before seven? Does it matter?
Well, basically, I mean, to me, if you're really doing work sessions on different topics, you're essentially just changing your meeting time to 6:30 and starting with a work session. It's not, you're, you're getting a new meeting time. I know the idea had been thrown out by the solicitor initially about, do you want to start a half an hour early for purely the purposes of agenda planning, which would be a pretty contained conversation about what are you doing next? Why are you doing it next? Do you want to move this here or there? Whereas a different sort of work session each time, um, you're going to have to prep. I mean, that requires more prep work in early start time and it's a different animal. I, that is not what I had thought Osway was going to be proposing, but hey, throw it on the table.
Yeah. Evan?
Oh, I, I just, I mean, we talked about this briefly when we got together. Um, but I would be interested in what, that piece, like who does the planning for it? Who does the prep? Who decides what the topics would be?
Well, from the, from the agenda, agenda planning perspective, a lot of it is geared towards the stuff that I'm bringing before council. So a good example is going to be what I've included in my manager's report today, talking about gas aggregation and, uh, and agraria project. So, during my, during my performance, performance review process, we talked about the value proposition centering more around, around, around some of our projects, putting council at the center in order to implement that from a process perspective, having that ability to talk about those agenda items that I'm bringing to you down the road gives us that mechanism to say, what is your expectation of that work? What do I need to bring back to council to fulfill your expectations, give you the background information that you need to make informed decisions? And are we heading in the right direction around, uh, village goals and objectives? So yes, it centers around, uh, agenda, uh, agenda planning, but it, a lot of the. So yes, it centers around agenda, agenda planning, but a lot of the agendas have specific topics.
And also their topics, for example, a compost project might be something that we would bring for a work session. I'm very interested in bringing the climate action, sort of where that stands and have council talk about that. That's something I'd like to do in June. So, and, and in terms of who would prepare, I would, if it's the village manager bringing the work session, I would assume the village manager would prepare. Council member or two council members or council member and let's say if it were the compost, Hosway and I would prepare together, whomever is working on the issue.
Yeah, no, I think what I was just trying to get, get to is like, so how would we decide that we would talk about compost versus talking about, I don't know, anything like?
I think we would do it, I would think we would do it at the next part of this agenda. So we would do it like at this meeting when we, you know, do agenda planning and we'd come to some consensus about like this would be a good topic. So, I mean, I, because I think if we wait, you know, for the agenda planning meeting, then we're not all involved. So I feel like if we do this, you know, we say, you know, at the end of this meeting, we're going to do this the next time. What were you thinking, Carmen?
I appreciate the proposal, I appreciate the idea, but I think that if we work toward more effective communication, like, so you're talking about a half an hour meeting before every council meeting, okay? And so what if we have an executive session?
We're here at five?
Five thirty? You know, I, I think that, you know, I'm, I would, I wouldn't be opposed to having, we pretty much know what's coming down the pike. I wouldn't be opposed to having one once a month.
Yep.
You know, but, but not every meeting, especially because of stuff like executive session.
Yeah, I think, when I think about it, like, related to my debrief from the last meeting, if I had thought about it, like I would have, like maybe spent that time talking about the zoning proposal for those 30 minutes.
Okay.
You know, for example, but I like your idea, like we don't have to commit to doing it every, you know, meeting. So, you know, we can, but I, I think we should try it, you know, and see, you know, when we have like topics that we think, you know, could use some extra time, so.
And so that should be at the discretion of council or the village manager, probably council, say, hey, we need to have this, this particular meeting, not everyone, there would be a memo, like, hey, we're going to do the work session thing now, instead of, it's the every, it's the every meeting part, because sometimes with it, eh, sometimes I don't think it's necessary, sometimes it's more than necessary.
Yep. Gavin?
I'll just say, I do really like the idea of the, of agenda planning as being a component. I mean, obviously, we're talking about 30 minutes once a month.
A month.
And we're trying to also talk about concepts, I mean, this is going to fly by, but I did like the agenda planning component of it.
Yeah.
Because it does feel a little bit, I guess, somebody's not part of the agenda planning.
Yeah.
When we get to the meetings and things feel like they're kind of a surprise, or it feels like.
Yep.
It hasn't been vetted, it's like, it's hard to know how to respond, so to participate in that would be nice. The other thing is, that's like the short term, then I don't feel like we do a very good job of talking about the longer term of how we're doing toward our goals, so that piece that Hosway mentioned resonated with me. Totally game to start out to try it. I guess, a little nervous that it's like, what are we, are we doing it as a future agenda planning? Are we doing it as more time to talk about topics? It feels kind of like.
And it would be, it would be changing our meeting times because we can't hang out and talk about anything because it, it has to be a public meeting.
Correct.
So we can call it a work session, but we're having an earlier meeting.
An earlier meeting, right. Yeah, Amy, come on up.
So yes, that's exactly right. It is still, work sessions are still open meetings and it would still be subject, right, it would still be subject to the notice requirements of people, for residents to be present. But the other thing that it's useful for is in, with communities that have work sessions is in staff meetings, right? Because when Hosway meets with his department heads, there are ideas floated in those meetings that it's like, well, I don't know, should, is that something, be nice to have council guidance on where they'd want to go with that. And then a work session gives staff the ability to present something to you preliminarily, not in a way that it's fully baked and on your agenda.
Can we do that as needed, though? I mean.
Oh, nothing has to be set in stone.
Yeah, I mean, like, I'm on as needed.
Yeah.
I'm on as needed, I don't think that it's necessary to have it every meeting. That's just mine.
Yeah. We can, we can try it with once a month, as you proposed, Carmen, and we can pick whether that's the first or second meeting of the month and we see how it goes. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work, it's great, and we'll probably want more of it. I think just being open to it.
And even if you decide to do one at the second meeting of the month or whatever, and there needed to be an exec session, well, no work session this meeting, there's going to be an exec session instead.
Yep.
I'm hopeful that it means not staying here until 11:30 or having conflict about issues that we can work off line, that it might not be fully there where you expect them to be, or we are doing God's work and ends up we're not.
Well, this is why I guess I kind of connected, you know, council committees to this piece of the agenda, because again, well, I'm glad to hear about the special events committee, because that address would address one of the four topics that took a lot of time. The YSDC piece, I would have liked that to have been like vetted somehow beforehand, and so I don't know if that means a different committee. You know, the housing committee, I kind of already referenced, I understand that it was hard to make a recommendation about, you know, that particular topic, but in general, you know, I mean, I think as these kinds of things come up, we should think about, you know, beyond like a work session, which might do the trick, is there a subcommittee that should meet? And that's some of that, yes.
So apropos to that, I would like to have time thinking of work sessions, talk about where the climate actions work is, where it's gotten stuck, what might be some options, and I'd like to do that in, well, probably the second council meeting in June. By that time, I think there'll be a bit more information. I'd like to have it happen at the council table because, well, because we're, council is supporting this, so I think we need to have a discussion as council about what, here's where things are, what do we want to do? What, where do we want to go from here?
Well, maybe that's our first try at a work session in June. So, because I think, you know, you've got the environmental commission that can vet this, you know, ahead of time, so maybe let's tentatively slot that for June.
Okay, the second meeting in June.
Second meeting in June. Yep.
So I guess my only, that sounds like a topic. I, I would love for, I would like for one of these, we're only going to do one a month and we're going to try out to be like an actual future agenda planning. So this is one idea, there was, you mentioned the compost thing, you've got, you talked about the agraria thing and what was the other one?
Gas aggregation.
The gas aggregation, but.
So that, is that along the lines of like a goal check-in?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, well, let's do that at the next meeting. I mean, I don't think we have an executive session, so why don't we try that for the second meeting in May and then we do variance in June? All right, let's try it. Okay. All right, well, I promised that we were going to be out of here by 9:30, so, and I think we're at future agenda items, so anything we need to think about for future meetings? Okay, so, is it okay? Yeah.
So I just, this goes just perfectly in line with what we just talked about on agenda item I didn't know was going to be there. I'm just asking all of us to just take a breath right now, and I know we all want to leave, but to actually take a second and do future agenda planning. So if you're seeing something that's complicated, because part of what happens with these agendas is we put 10 meeting, 10 minutes on for something that takes half an hour, or something's going to come up that nobody else knows about until we see it at the agenda and we're assuming it's been vetted. So I'm just saying out loud, instead of us rushing out of here, can we all just actually think this through? And can people please say if there are things they are expecting to bring up so that we don't get surprised when they come up? So that, Judy, that's a preface to, I know you usually run through stuff, I'm just saying out loud, I really want us to pause and use this time thoughtfully, because I think, to me, that's really substantive in not having, this, it's been a regular challenge at meetings.
Okay, then do you have some things?
No, I'm just saying structurally, that's it. I know, I don't have anything.
So there will be a report about the first phase of the, whatever we're calling, the Yellow Springs Police Inquiry. And we're going, Kevin and I, well, and I'm, you know, Kevin is facing some significant family issues, so I'm not sure how much he's going to be able to be involved, but the idea is that we will be through with our sort of investigation by the end of May, write up a report, so, but that would still be into June. So I don't have a particular time about that, but that is one thing. The compost thing, I guess, depending on what the council and trust decides, we'll be able to either move forward or not, but I don't think we have anything to put on the agenda about that at this point.
Likewise for the bike trail. No more information in the month. I have, I'll have a new agenda item. I shared with some of you that I attended a training, Brickler and Eckler, actually did the, did the inflation reduction workshop at the Ohio City Managers Association, so I got the NOFA for charging EV charging infrastructure grant is due at the end of the month, May 30th. So we want to explore looking at strategically placing EV charging stations throughout the village while also improving infrastructure for future EV implementation. The challenge with the grant is that it's a minimum ask of $500,000 with a $100,000 matching funds. I think that if we compare it with infrastructure improvements, like replacing a line, distribution line in the village, we could probably get the benefit of infrastructure improvement while also putting out EV charging infrastructure. So we're going to work through it with AMP and possibly bringing a grant writer from AMP to help on the project, and if we can, it's feasible, we'd like to bring a request at the May 15th meeting.
And is there any option to collaborate with another municipality on this?
This one, I didn't see a regional collaboration on this, it's, this is federal transportation money. I don't know, maybe if we were doing a corridor, like if we're doing a, I imagine if we were doing a regional project, is there a midpoint that we can partner with somebody else to, would be a multi-community benefit, probably, but I don't know the details enough.
Because I'm just worried about that $100,000. Well, I mean, the upside is if we can do it with electric improvements, we've got, presumably, we've got that in the electric, so.
Right.
Is that a future agenda item?
Yeah.
It's a resolution, I'm, I'm hearing resolution.
Yes, resolution.
I'm hearing a lot of information that we need to accompany that resolution, but yes.
Yes, this is the benefit of the future agenda planning discussion items, I know. The day is the first, so we'll have.
Okay, so then just to say, just to get in the practice of this, so then the question becomes like, is this a priority for us?
Right.
So it's, that's like a new thing.
Yeah.
I don't remember us talking about any of that in the context of the, so this is where like, rather than sort of, it just goes on, ideally, we'd have a little bit of time to like, look at our goals and then say, is this something that we want to spend time on? And make some, so I'm not opposed to it, I'm just saying structurally, what we end up doing is like shiny penny, shiny penny, let's just, you know, pause. So I would suggest like, if there's no, is there a rush to it? Is there a timeliness to it?
May 30th.
May 30.
We can wait until next year if we don't apply this year, if the money's available next year.
Okay. So if there's timeliness to it, then I think on the agenda's fine, and then I guess my hope would be that at the next meeting, we start setting some, in that work session time, we start setting some norms around what happens when there's a shiny penny. Okay. I'll bring up a different topic. So I see RECs on here, like renewable energy credit, credit policy conversation. So I know it's been a complex conversation in the past, we talked about it a little bit at the finance committee, I guess I'm just, this seems like the opportunity to say, hey, are there things that people know they want to see or things they're expecting so that that isn't an hour-long conversation, that it is prepared for effectively to be less of one? Is that, is, is there anything like that that people are expecting?
Well, what I'm expecting for RECs is a memo in the packet that we could then like respond to. So that's what I think needs to happen there.
A recommendation.
Right, right. I mean, this is something that I, I guess I thought, if it's not environmental commission, then somebody's got to.
No, I don't think it's the environmental commission as constituted.
Then I guess it can be finance committee. So, but yeah, I think there should be a recommendation that we respond to.
Well, I mean, I've had conversations with Hosway, I mean, I'd like to see, you know, why are we selling them now? You know, how is it determined when the best time to sell them is? What the advantage of buying cheap RECs is and a recommendation of who's to buy, because one of our consultants had suggested that you buy RECs that are in the area or something that you support, and then the options for how the money that we get would be used.
Okay.
All right, and so the guys who do our gas aggregation, I can never remember the name of the group.
Sopac.
Sopac, so that'd be, that could be a Sopac invited thing?
Sopac can help with that.
Conversation, no, yes, no?
They'll have experience, yeah.
Sopac and PCFO, both of those organizations help with that.
Well, the Sopac, the guy, like one of the guys that was here, that's the only reason why I mentioned it.
Yeah.
Okay, so is that a future agenda item?
Yeah, it's on for next, next meeting.
And then we need to be more active about our housing initiatives, so I don't know if there's more to follow up from the housing committee meeting, but it could also just be, you know.
We have another, we have a housing committee meeting this week, I believe.
So we got boards and commission report up.
So we'll do a, so, okay, so I think the idea is, is that based on the feedback we've gotten from the people who are not on the committee, which is good, we should plan on that being a 15-minute discussion, because it's a huge topic and we're, it's, I mean, I'm just acknowledging that people want to talk about this and that we only talk about things for five minutes.
So that's going to probably go up to June 5th, because right now you are not getting out of here. Can it come soon on the 15th?
Okay, so then, and I guess all I'm saying is, is that we've, we've talked about housing as being our top priority, and then we bump it so that we can talk about, anyway, so just, this is the kind of thing I'll, hopefully we'll flag going forward. No, that's all.
So is there a time that housing's going to get discussed?
There's a housing committee, and then there's, it's going to be one of the commission reports, and then I'm just acknowledging that it's going to take longer than one.
We're talking about the first meeting in June for housing, and then.
So maybe it should be more than coming up under committees.
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be its own topic.
Yeah, there's not enough time.
Yep. Okay, anything else?
So then to be clear, like right now you've got AMP presentation, so is this where we should be looking for, like, so for instance, this thing that came up, the consideration of a PUD, so that wasn't, was that something that was flagged in future agenda items last time? Or that just came up in agenda planning?
No, that's been there.
Yeah. Okay, we don't ever spend any time talking about this, so like, sorry.
But you.
When's the last time we spent more than one minute talking about future agenda planning?
Okay, when I send out the draft agenda, is the time for you to say, I don't understand this, what is this?
And here's the expectation, is that when we get those, that everything's been vetted. And then when we get here and we have an hour-long conversation about something, because either the, because for some reason the conversation hasn't been thorough, that's something that we have, when I see the agenda planning, I'm assuming it's been vetted. I'm assuming that these things have been discussed, that there aren't going to be hour, there's not going to be an hour-long worth of discussion. So the reason I'm getting involved now is because that hasn't been happening.
Well, it's also because this council tends to not take recommendations as, as a recommendation, but more as a starting point for discussion. That is kind of how a council is, and so sometimes there's what, what has thought to be a vetted notion and it's put forward and it's not quick, and people do want more. And then it goes all sideways, and other times it heads right on down the road, like the PUD on less than five acres. I mean, it's a little unpredictable in that regard and.
And not that I totally disagree, but we don't usually have four-hour meetings, but I will say.
I know, I'm not saying.
Right, no, I know, I know, so I'm not disagreeing as much as I would say like, event fees is an example of, I think, what Judy was saying. We did have a memo, I mean, I understand, I mean. We did have a memo, I mean, I understand, I mean, you were actually in the Finance Committee meeting, so we had talked about that, but we did have a memo. I would argue that it was vetted, but it still took a lot of time. So, I don't, I don't know that we can always avoid that. You know, YSDC, I think that was a little bit different. I wasn't responsible for that topic, I would have liked it to be better vetted. You know, so anyway, but I, so anyway, I generally agree, I would just say, you know, we, it's not easy to always manage it, so.
Well, I appreciate this conversation. I appreciate talking about potential topics, and I, like, the last time I made, said that I wanted to, when Judy, when you sent out the agenda, I said I wanted to talk about the work session, but it didn't get on the agenda, so, plus, saying.
Yeah, because Brian had family stuff going on, and I didn't wanna make him talk about.
Anyway, it didn't get on it, and that's different than having a conversation where we can respond and add.
Yep. No, I think this is good as well, and I think, I don't want it to be lost in the shuffle that we get so buried with a million pieces of legislation that we do get away from our goals, and so I think that that's a good thing to be reminded of. And so, maybe we can't do like 20 zoning amendments in a meeting, so. Okay, alright, well, it is 9:29, do we have anything else? Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I know.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Enjoy May Day.